Allison and I am the moderator this evening. We always begin all of our meetings with our nonpartisan statement. The League acts in support of or in opposition to selected governmental issues which its members have studied. It does not support or oppose candidates, factions, or political parties. The League members as individuals are urged to work in the political party of their choice. To protect the League's nonpartisan policy, guidelines regarding the political activities of the Board of Directors are reviewed frequently. The League of Women Voters of Pullman is fully committed to diversity, equity, and inclusion in principle and practice. These concepts are central to our current and future success in engaging all individuals, households, communities, and policymakers in creating a more perfect democracy. We acknowledge and honor the sovereignty of the First Peoples of the Palouse region and their descendants, including our neighbors, the Nimmipu, Nez-Zealos, and Palouse tribes, the Confederated Tribes of the Coalville Reservation, and the Cordillane tribe. I always am one of the worst offenders for the cellphone, so please turn off your cellphones. We will not be taking questions from the audience for this primary, although since there's only three, we may allow that. But we encourage you all to contact the candidates with your concerns. We will try to get to as many questions -- well, we don't need that one. The candidates have -- please refrain from clapping, booing, shouting, yelling, et cetera. The candidates will have two minutes for opening statements, two minutes for closing remarks, and each candidate will have one minute to answer the questions. A timer is located in the front, and they hold up a sign, so please, more or less, keep them timed. I'm being very loosey-goosey tonight because we don't have as many candidates. The candidates for Ward Three are Colin Bannister, Federico Bartolo, John Castleman, Dave Gibney, and Carl Olson, Shay Ortega, and Toni Schumlas?
Schumlas.
Schumlas, okay, almost. Dave and Carl could not attend because of prior commitments, but they provided statements to be read. I'll ask Carl, Andrew, to read Carl's first.
I'm a little trippy up here. My name's Andrew Flavetti. I am reading on behalf of Carl tonight. He couldn't be here. He's on a backpacking trip with his oldest son. And if you know his oldest son, he wouldn't let him out of this. So thanks for being here tonight and showing your interest in this election. My name's Andrew Flavetti. I'm Carl's campaign manager, for lack of a better term. Carl was born and raised in Pullman. He completed his education here from preschool all the way through PhD. For the past 15 years, he has served as a professor of civil engineering at WSU. He and his wife are raising their three kids on Pioneer Hill and are deeply committed to Pullman's future. Carl can't be here this evening. That said, he's fully committed to the race, and he'll be responding to questions from tonight's forum on his website. I'll give you an email at the end here that you guys can all email him at. His core message is that Pullman needs to be a yes town, a town where businesses can flourish, where the city incentivizes development, and where we work to bring in more tourism. To do this, the city must work together with WSU and Schweitzer to build a stronger future. First, Carl believes the city's risk-averse attitude toward business and development must change. The term "gift of public funds" has been a hot topic at a few city council meetings lately. Carl believes that this is a nuanced legal interpretation, and it shouldn't block the city from making smart investments, especially in businesses downtown. Second, he wants to address the challenges of being a border town. For instance, in Oregon, some counties near Idaho have different minimum wages. Carl believes Pullman should lead or join a coalition of border towns and counties to push for similar regulatory changes that would help local businesses compete. So what makes Carl different from the other qualified candidates in Ward Three? He's an engineer, trained to work with technical reports and development processes. That background gives him insight into improving the permitting process and understanding technical documents like the RH2 water supply report and the Welch and Comer transportation bypass report. He's also a proven problem solver and leader in his department at WSU, skills he's ready to bring to city council. Running for city council has been a rewarding experience for him. He's loved meeting neighbors door-to-door and hearing ideas that have helped shape his platform. While he couldn't be here tonight, he'll be at Pups and Cups tomorrow. Or if you'd like to have a conversation with him directly, you can email him at karl@pullman@gmail.com. He promises to show up at your doorstep. There's some brochures back there if you have additional questions for him, and I'm happy to entertain questions as well. So thanks for letting me be here. Dave?
Okay, this is Dave's statement. The Whitman County Planning Commission is meeting tonight, and I am the chair, so I can't be there tonight. Please, I have served the city of Pullman in several roles over the last few decades, including a member of, and then chair of, the Pullman Planning Commission. I also spent over 30 years, 20 years, on the board of the Friends of Gladish. 16 years ago, I came in, I came 34 votes shy of winning the third ward at council position, so I couldn't, not file this year. Thank you for your interest in the city of Pullman.
I have a question. So what is Dave's last name?
Oh, Dave Gibney.
Gibney?
Yes. Didn't I say Gibney? I might not have. I'm sorry.
And what is Carl's last name?
Olson, with an E.
Thank you.
Okay. We're going to start with the opening statements. You both, you all have two minutes, so you will begin, John.
All right. Thank you. My name is John Castleman. I also was born and raised in Pullman. Graduated from Pullman High School in 2003. Went to Washington State University, ran track and field for the Cougs. And after that, moved away for about a decade, a little over a decade, and kind of bounced around different areas of Washington State. And we decided, my wife and I decided to come back to Pullman. Intentionally, we didn't have jobs lined up, we didn't have a house. We just said, we're going to Pullman. We're committing to this community. We want to build community and raise a family there. And that's what we did. Within a couple months, we had jobs and a house. For me, from that day moving back, I wanted to get involved, and I think that's one of the things that separates me from the other candidates, is my governance experience. So I came back, began serving on the board of the Palouse Discovery Science Center, chaired that board, as well as the Pullman Community Montessori also chaired that board. And what the former led it out of a very difficult situation, and the latter started a school in a pandemic. So in very trying times, I stepped up to serve as a chair, despite my other board members being directors, being managers, having much more leadership experience than I had. But I saw the problem and stepped up to fix it when others wouldn't, and I will bring that same approach, that same courage, to city council. I managed the K-12 average program that Schweitzer Engineering Laboratories have for the past seven years, and have built it into a program that is a trusted leader in the region and state of Idaho, and also in eastern Washington. I believe youth are, I made an intentional choice once upon a time to devote my life to education, and I did that because I believed that by serving our youth, we're solving a whole lot of other problems when it comes to crime, economic prosperity, mental well-being of a community. And so I intend to keep youth in mind and other groups that have not seen as much representation as I believe they should have in Pullman.
I thought we each had one. Hi, my name is Shay Ortega. I have lived in Pullman for about four years now. I moved here in 2021. Just after the pandemic hit, I was accepted to Washington State University, and I moved out here from where I lived in the Philippines for two years. So I got to spend COVID in the Philippines, which was excellent. You should ask me about it sometime. I also have a lot of background in leadership. I serve on a few different boards and committees here in Pullman. I'm with Palouse Edge. That's E-D-J-E. You can look them up at palooseedge.org. And they serve our students here, our K-12 students in Whitman County and the Palouse in general, to make sure that they have access to culturally competent education and have their needs met in any way that they might not be receiving right now. They do a lot of work with our local tribes. So as we acknowledged earlier, the First Peoples here, the Nimmipu tribes, the Palouse Peoples, Confederated Tribes, the Coalville Reservation, they do a lot of efforts that bridge the gaps between local communities, the needs of the students, and members just in general. I also serve as the organizer for Indivisible Palouse. If you've attended any of my rallies, I'm very thankful for your presence. The fight doesn't ever stop for honest democracy. And we do have a rally tomorrow, and I would love to see you all there and answer more questions, but I do have 30 seconds. So I've got two children, one just graduated from Pullman High School. I have a younger who attends school with John's daughter as well. They are good friends. And they are both here tonight, and I have a lovely girlfriend, May. But that's a little bit about me, and I'd love to get to know all of you better.
I'm going to stand. I'm more comfortable. My name is Toni Schumlas. First, thank you to everybody for being here, and thank you to the League of Women Voters. I come from the Neal family. I'm the sixth generation of my family to be born here in Pullman. Neal includes Neal Public Library. Too loud? I already talked loud, sorry. I was born and raised here. I went to WSU here. I spent two years in Southern California after I graduated from WSU. Then I came back and took over the family business, which I have owned Rico's, for a decade now, taking it over from my father. My core message is just that downtown Pullman has been dying, not all at once, but by a thousand cuts over the last 45 years due to apathy, bad decisions, and missed opportunities. What used to be a vibrant center is now full of empty storefronts and missed opportunities. As the downtown is dimmed, I believe that the vision, energy, and identity of Pullman has dimmed along with it. What we need, what I think we need, is leadership that gets it, someone who's run a downtown business, somebody who has been there on the front lines as this has happened. I am running to make Pullman better by rebuilding the core of Pullman. I think when you do that, the vision and the attitude and the love of Pullman from the locals will really come back into focus. We can take back the economic vitality we once had, and we can build a space where people will want to gather and be. But again, this vision isn't just about downtown. It's about rebuilding Pullman, stopping the slow decay, and creating a new identity of vision and life. Thank you very much.
Okay, it is now time for the questions. Remember, you have one minute to answer. If you watched last night's forum, it's going to be different tonight. The first question, we'll start with you, John. It will be, how would you describe the job as, how would you describe what the job of city councillor entails?
Yeah, so city councillor, you're one of seven, you're one of a council of seven. So you're one voice, one vote. You can make those votes on policy, on budget, but to me, that's just part of the power of a city councillor. I think much more than that, city council members are representatives of their community, and that imbues them with an authority to act, not just in official channels, but also step up to serve as leaders of the community. And also, that responsibility is to reach out. I don't think it's enough to say, hey, door's open, I'll talk to anyone anytime. I will reach out, knock on doors, call, whatever, meet people face-to-face. That's just who I am as a person. That's how I think you get the job done. I think there's also ways to access and connect with people. And I think about groups like the Palouse Alliance, connect, and how they connect different networks within Pullman. We're kind of a siloed community, and a big part of what I think the city council has the power to do is to connect those different silos, to connect those different communities. Thank you.
Shay, same question.
Okay, so I would say that the job of a city councillor is you are imbued with this voting power to synthesize the voices and the will of the people. Your constituents need to be connected with. We should be making sure that we are in community spaces, serving our communities with civic engagement, and ensuring that we are touching on the most important parts of what makes Pullman great. So really emphasizing that we are taking the values that the community holds close to their hearts, such as our families, our education, our community events, and ensuring that all of the nonprofits who work with them, all of the city officials, and anyone else who has a vested interest in our community, has the resources that they need for those to be successful. Community cohesion is extremely important, and that's what a city councillor is there to do, to ensure that our community stays together with cohesiveness, kindness, and empathy.
Toni?
All right. Thank you for the wonderful question. For me, being a city councilperson means that I would be a liaison between the people who live here and the businesses and the city. I would be someone who could listen to you, to synthesize the information that you're trying to give me, take that to the city, and then likewise, take the information from the city and disseminate it back out to you. But I would also have a hand in permitting and regulation and fee structures and that sort of stuff, which will have long-term benefits or detriments to Pullman. Thank you.
Thank you. Our second question, Shay, you'll start this one. Are there ways the city could more effectively communicate meeting agenda items? And what, oh, and what is the role of citizens in the city government?
Okay, so if I understand the question correctly, it's how to effectively communicate agenda items? And what was the second part?
The role of citizens in these meetings.
Okay, so I think that civic engagement is probably one of the most important things that a community can lean into. We are all members of the bigger Pullman family, and so ensuring that citizens are aware of when meetings are happening, how they can be accessed, if they're going to be televised from certain areas, if you can access them on YouTube. Getting involved in just listening and being informed is one of the most important ways that citizens can engage. And I think that outreach could probably be a little bit better. I think we're all interested in what our city officials have to say, and to create spaces such as, you know, events like this, where the community members can come together and get involved and be informed about what's happening in their city, and then talk about it amongst themselves would be probably the best way to do it.
Toni?
Thank you for that wonderful question. Unfortunately, it's very hard in this media world to get a lot of information out, especially if it's dry and boring. And a lot of city stuff is just dry and boring when you put it out on the media. So I think that they need to utilize somebody to make the information more interesting, more colorful, to really push it on all the different channels, Nextdoor, Facebook, Instagram, really get it out there. You have to engage the citizenry where they're at. And then, as a city council member, it is my job to try and get that information from them and then resynthesize it back. But as far as effectively communicating, it's very hard. It just needs to be more interesting.
Toni, do you need me to re? Okay.
Thank you. So we can increase the number of channels of communication, sure, but I think the city's been gradually doing that. I've been excited to see that their social media channel and, like Instagram, for example, their posting has been good. I think more important than that, though, is the how of the communication. I don't think we necessarily need to make it interesting. I think how you make it interesting is that, one, you summarize. People don't have time to read, you know, 200 pages of documents. So what are the relevant points? What's at stake for Pullman? What are the trade-offs, the pros and cons? And what is this building towards? What's the goal? What's the context? What's the other, what's, what other additional information do people need to understand what we're working towards? Because when we see what we're working towards as a community, then we feel inclined to contribute. So that leads me to the next question, which is how do citizens get involved? We inform them, we empower them, we support them, and then we get out of their way. There are folks in this room right now who are phenomenal community contributors, who do a great job. Let's find them, let's empower them, let them. The city can't solve all problems, so we need to empower people to do that, too.
Thank you. Toni, you get to start this one. How would you help achieve the goal of making certain the city works to create an inclusive, welcoming, and supportive community that respects all people?
Okay, thank you. That's a really great question. That has to be from the leadership down inside the city. Yeah, that has to start inside the city. That has to start with us being welcoming and inclusive to each other, and making sure that when we reach out to people, that we do so in such a way that is warm and committed to the people. And it can't just be words on paper. It has to be through action, because words on paper don't mean a whole lot. And so I don't know, I don't really think that you need to do an initiative or anything like that. I think it just needs to be understood inside the city council that that's what we are, and that's how we present ourselves, and that sort of thing radiates from within to without.
Thank you. John?
I agree with Toni that it starts with the leaders of our community showing the way, being models for the citizenry. I don't think you can force people to respect each other, but I think you can show people how it's done. I think, too, that I recall going, this was at the United, excuse me, UCC up on campus, they had a forum on race in Pullman. And at the end of that forum, one woman had made a comment that really stuck with me, and it was, raise the flag, show people visibly that you are here to support them and care for them. And I love that. Not just, you know, it wasn't just about this physical flag, but also being there, being the one to reach out and say, hey, I care about you, I care about what you're going through, and I'm going to help to work and work to get you, help, help work to get you what you need. Lastly, I'll just say, too, that there's social infrastructure that we need to build, like I was just talking about, but also physical infrastructure. I think art and welcoming spaces bring people together, and when you bring people together, break bread together, that's how you create a welcoming environment.
Thank you. Shay?
I love this question. So I started out in Pullman as an Amira Corps member, where I served with the Center Pacific Engagement through WSU, where I created the Cougar Food Pantry. And that was one of the most empowering things I had ever experienced. I really saw how in-depth people in the community who are already organizing, already doing nonprofit efforts, how hard they work, and how they cherish the way that others educate where they may not have been informed before. So when it comes to the diversity and being inclusive and being equitable, we need to be uplifting all of the voices. We have so many different countries that live in Pullman, so many different foods to try. I mean, like, if anything, let food be your anchor. There are so many different celebrations that we could lean into that are already being hosted. How do we expand on that and bring it into the community beyond the university? I really believe that we have the framework for it, the diversity, equity, inclusion, and belonging with the Pullman School District, and also in other organizations. Palouse Edge is also one of those organizations that works with those efforts. So be the change you want to be.
Thank you. John, you get to start this time. What role do you think the city council should play in supporting downtown businesses? What specific actions or programs would you advocate to ensure their success?
Yep. First and foremost, when talking to businesses downtown, I hear a lot of the same things, and that is the city makes it really hard to do business, whether it comes to permitting or inspections and repeated inspections and, hey, changes, but nope, changes again. So I think we need to start there first. That's the low-hanging fruit, is making sure that the city council is creating that expectation for the staff, that we're treating our business owners as our customers, that we're helping them to succeed, because we know that business owners are the ones who are kind of the front lines of culture and connection in our community. As far as specific initiatives I would take, I'd be willing to consider a lot of things. Some of the ones that get me most excited are creating short-term tax incentives for startups, so we just get more in to start, give them a chance. I think we take a look at things like partnering with WSU. They've got several different entrepreneurial programs, setting up short-term or longer-term business incubators in vacant buildings. I think that'll also, and it looks like my time's up. Thank you.
Shay?
So I've heard some very similar things, difficult regulations, inconsistency in policies, high expectations without providing the resources to meet those expectations. I really believe that our city doctrines are living and breathing, and we should be investing, as city council members, we should be investing the time to explore what that looks like, how it truly impacts the social infrastructure of our community for our small businesses and our local business owners especially. I mean, they are renters as well, and 75% of the population in Pullman are renters. We should value that. They are the crux of our economic vitality. So when it comes to looking at the policies that are already existing, we should be synthesizing our small business owners and what they need into our policies to make it easier for them to support other incoming small businesses, those who may take over after they are gone, or meet them where they're at. So I feel like, okay. I keep worrying that I'm hitting the time.
Oh, no. I could talk for hours about this one. You know what? We live in Washington State. There's already a lot of permits and regulations in Washington State, and I think that Pullman could back off some of these, because it's making it very hard for new businesses to get a foothold downtown. We need to work with Bobby Reiter and Sean, who is the Economic Development Coordinator. They have really great ideas, and they have the know-how, and we need someone on city council who is standing behind them and is the wind beneath their wings, clearing the path for them to bring these great ideas together, such as the Small Business Incubator, which Sean has already started putting together. He wants to make loans and grants available for small businesses. There's a lot of really great ideas already in the works, and we just need someone who can clear that path, who knows how to talk to the other businesses and knows how to talk to the city, and to really make that accessible for everybody. Thank you.
Okay, Shay, you get to start this question. In light of last year's community survey, do you support funding the Parks and Rec Department at its current level so residents can continue to enjoy the services they provide? And secondarily, would you support additional funding for this department so they can expand?
Okay, so I sat on, I sat in on the last city council meeting. It may have been the one before this last one, I think it was last week. But they were talking about how our parks and recreation, they're in the top four of what our citizens want to see funded, and what they want to see have expanded funding. We cherish our green spaces, and it should stay like that. It's what keeps us cool in the hot summers, and they're only going to get hotter. It's what provides us shade when we want to come together as a community. It creates investment in everything that Pullman is. It makes us want to come together and bring our kids and raise them here and be involved. So if anything, a Parks and Rec space is not just a place to go and relax. It's a place where you can learn valuable tacit knowledge, say, like gardening, or anything that you can do in an outside space. It's where we can come together and broaden our knowledge and speak with each other. So that's, I think that's really where the magic happens in a community, is our Parks and Rec spaces. And in addition to that, when you have activities that we can provide for our youth, our children, that keeps them off the streets, that keeps them focused, and it gives them a better headspace to really provide for their community and for themselves.
Toni?
Pullman Parks and Recs is part of what makes this town wonderful. I was raised in its soccer program and its T-ball program, all that sort of stuff. And I absolutely think that Pullman And I absolutely think that Pullman Parks and Recs should remain funded at the high level that it is. But without seeing next year's budget and being aware that both nationally and within the state, times are very hard, I could not tell you if I would agree with increasing the funding. But I can tell you that it's absolutely a gem here in Pullman and that the funding should never go down.
Like the other candidates, I would support maintaining the budget where it's at. I think, you know, somewhere like $2 to $3 million currently. But I think, like the others have said, Parks and Rec is the shining star of Pullman. I mean, that's what people love. That's what they say they love. One thing that stood out to me about the survey was that a lot of Pullman residents said that they wanted to spend money on maintaining what we already have and connecting the trails. So like, just enhancing what we've already got. We don't need big, new, shiny things. It's, let's keep what we've got going well and create interconnections. I love that. At City Hall, the current space there is a phenomenal grounds for multi-generational interaction. The senior center preschool, which is where our youngest went to preschool in this gene, loved it, and they've got a new teen center, which is something I think providing opportunities for youth in that space, too, is fantastic. As far as increasing the budget, in that survey, the number-one choice for how we would fund it would be through impact fees. So that's fees, money, you know, that's the developer paying that cost. So we need to consider that and the implications of that as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Toni, you get to start the next question. How would you resolve disagreements with other city councilors?
Oh, this is really easy for me, because I work at a bar, and I resolve disagreements all the time. You know what? You have to sit and you have to listen. People won't stop talking until they've felt hurt. So you just have to give people space to feel heard. And then, once that space has been filled, you can start working with them on actual and practical solutions. But you're not getting anywhere until people have that room and that space and that ability to feel nurtured and heard.
John?
Yeah. Break bread. Sit down, eat food together. Get on the phone when you've got a disagreement or you've got an idea you want to hash out and talk. Right? Those Open Public Meetings Act. If there's a quorum, yeah, that work is going to be done officially behind, you know, on the days. But otherwise, city councilors can get together and talk outside. I think what's really important in terms of resolving conflict is getting to what is the other person, what do they really want? What's underneath some of the points they're bringing up? What's behind the disagreement? Where do you overlap? So I think working toward that, and that's what I commit to do. That's how I operate. I like working with people. I'm not afraid to address conflict and to empathize and listen to people I work with. We're all on the same team. Believe in Pullman.
Shay?
I have to echo what my fellow candidate said. There's a shortage of listening right now in the world, and that's created a lot of divisiveness. And it's painful to watch. It's painful to be in the middle of. But conflict is not necessarily a negative thing. It's necessary for growth. You have to face conflict head-on, listen to the other person, knowing that they had a totally different life experience than you did. And every single member of their family had a totally different life experience than other members in their families did. So you can't even loop families in the same category when it comes to experience. We have to start listening to each other and understand where our values lie, how we can compromise, and how we can make Pullman a safe space for everybody.
Thank you. The next question. John, you get to start. If you're elected, how do you plan to communicate with your constituents about what's going on in the city?
To some degree, like I'm already doing. Communicate through social media. I bring that up because it's where people are at. You know, we're shifting generationally to more and more consumer, or more and more interaction on social media. So I think that's one space. I love what Brandon Chapman was doing with newsletters. So kind of compiling that information. As I mentioned earlier today, I think distilling what the city is talking about. I don't think we see enough distillation of what those big ideas are and then why we voted the way we did. So that's something I had to commit to doing while, during the city council meetings, to every vote that I make, or at least every significant vote, to explain my rationale behind it. Right? We may disagree on things, but as long as people understand how we came to the conclusions that we did, I think that's building that ground for empathy, for agreement, for understanding. Again, to, so we all understand that we're on the same page. We're on the same team. We're all working for the good of Pullman. Yeah, live with that.
Shay?
Oh, goodness. I totally lost it. Do you need me to repeat the question? How to communicate with constituents, meet them where they're at? You know, honestly, I really fail when it comes to being on social media and communicating online. I do my best to answer all my emails, but really, I am an in-person kind of person. If you want to come talk to me, I invite you for coffee. I want to meet you out where you are. I want to come, you know, visit around town and really settle into one of our open spaces here and just have chats about what really, what things really mean to you. I value being out there and involved. And chances are, if you run into me, I'm already volunteering or doing something. I think that is one of the most important things to me, to be in my community, is the person who's already doing something about what I want to see change. And so I invite everybody, please reach out to me or email me. I think my phone number's up there. If it's not, I'm sorry. But I will get back to you on email. But, you know, let's get together in person and really chat it out. I'll be at pretty much every single Common Grounds event possible. So, yeah, that's my favorite way to do it.
Toni?
This is another easy one for me. I am already your favorite bartender. You can already come and find me. I am at the same place every day, every time, and I will talk to you about anything you want to talk about. I will listen and I will answer. I am also very active on social media. I have to be for Ricos. I work with WSU students through the marketing department every year to make me better. So I also have a very good reach that I can already put into place, which I think some of you have probably already noticed through my social media that's already out there. So both, I will reach people through social media, and I am right here, and I'm ready to answer questions, and I am accessible, and you don't have to buy anything. Just come in and talk to me. I would love to hear everything you have to say.
Okay. This is going to be Shay. You get to start. Are you concerned about the lack of stability in our city government? Could you address this issue? Just today, we have lost our new fire chief.
I am concerned about our lack of stability. To be really honest, the city council meetings that I have attended, a lot of the times, were talking about economic growth. And personally, as someone who has lived a long time without a stable financial setup, just because of my background, which was very marginalized and minoritized, I'm frustrated hearing that people are talking about economic growth without embracing stability first. I really think that there's a lot of work to be done in making Pullman a welcoming place, both economically and socially. And we're far from it. So we need to focus on what we've got here in front of us now before we start looking at growth. And that's very unfortunate to hear. I feel like I just met him. And Fire Brigade is one of the most valuable resources that any community can have.
Toni?
All right. Well, I think that Pullman's need to grow and revitalize and to make changes is budding up against the fact that Pullman hates to make changes. And this is going to cause instability and cognitive dissonance, and it's going to cause problems. But quite frankly, that's why this race has become so big, is because it's time for Pullman to make changes. It's time for Pullman to embrace that. There's a lot of people up here with a lot of really great ideas because of that. And I think that that, getting Pullman ready to change and to embrace its bigger changes, is going to help with the lack of stability. Because I just think that's what it is. It's just those two things budding up against each other.
John?
Yeah, I think that was really well said, Toni. But I'll say that people rarely leave a situation that they're really happy with. Right? You don't leave a good thing. That said, sometimes people do leave for, you know, life reasons. You know, spouse gets a job somewhere else. So I am very much interested in why this seems to be happening? Why is it clustered? Is there something else going on that citizens aren't aware of? And that's where I think transparency is key. So when we're seeing these departures, it's important that the city is being honest about that and sharing what they can share, right? Sometimes you can't share things, whether that's due to legalities, or let's say a person who's leaving is not going to be fully honest about why they've left, because they're afraid that might affect their opportunity to get a job somewhere else. So I think what's incumbent on the city is to communicate, to the degree they can, what's happening, why it's happening, what it means for the city. And I will commit to getting to root causes here. I think utilizing the data we can, seeing those stories. One thing that comes to mind, Mitsi Montoya, this is WSU, not City of Pullman, but that was one of the first times we got to see what Toni was saying play out. Right? Somebody wanting to make change, but then, and asking for change, but then not letting them make the change that they're wanting.
Toni, you get to start this time. As a city, as a council member, would you support the expansion of the homeless support programs in Pullman? And a follow-up question. Would you support a dedicated homeless shelter beyond just crisis and transitional housing?
This is another easy one to answer as a bar owner. I have had to call the EMTs or the police so many times late at night because people come into my place looking for warmth or looking for shelter. I don't think that Pullman has done a particularly fantastic job of taking care of people who are in crisis or who are homeless. I absolutely think that Pullman can and should do better in that space.
John?
I have not yet explored all the costs associated with developing a dedicated homeless shelter. I know that the city had tried a temporary one and tried to staff it with volunteers, and that it was pretty short-lived. Folks weren't able to commit to that on a regular basis. So I think if we're going to do that, that's going to entail significant costs. My approach to my role as city council member is often going to be coming back to, how can we empower citizens to do that work? I think about the Community Action Center. I think, again, I mentioned the Palouse Alliance earlier. How do we get people, how do we get the community members who are already doing the work? How do we empower them to do more of it, to better understand underlying causes and respond rapidly when things change? And, you know, with the federal government or the state government, things that are outside of our control. So absolutely, I think we need to help the most vulnerable among us first. I think that's incumbent upon us as Pullanites. We are a welcoming city. We are a city where a lot of people come and go. And so for those of us who are here, who are planted, it's on us to support, again, those who are less fortunate. Thank you.
Shay?
I just want to say that many of us, as I said earlier, 75% of us are renters. Many of us are two paychecks away from homelessness. And I've encountered that myself as a single mother. And I 100% support the expansion of our homeless support and the shelter. As a student who was working in basic needs over at WSU, we have a lot more transient students than you think, and we hardly see any of them. Why is that? So we have strong nonprofits in the community who are already doing the hard work. ATVP has been extremely valuable. They work directly with our law enforcement officials. The Center for Civic Engagement, the Community Action Center, WSU's Basic Needs Department. All of these individuals are so short on resources and involvement, we can do better as a city. I have seen what happens when a small rural community falls into disrepair because big investors choose to pull out suddenly when the resource is depleted. We are not far off from that as a rural community. Every rural community is. So let's do better and be preventative about it and address it now.
Thank you. Who started that?
Oh, I did.
Then Toni, it's your turn.
Oh, Toni. Yeah, I started.
Then we start with John again. Okay. Okay. How would you increase collaboration with WSU to encourage students' interaction with downtown businesses?
Yep. First, I would start talking to and working with the students. I think, you know, we do, there's, for example, Town Gown. That's one way. But I think we need to open more gates up. I speak on an annual basis with Leadership WSU. It's a group of high-achieving juniors and seniors, and talk to them about this exact issue. You know, raise your hand, step up, find problems and attempt to solve them. You can start doing that now. Working with students, there's a, I don't know how many. There's hundreds of student associations and groups up on campus who all have our kind of pre-built-in communities. So I think finding ways that we can connect those specific groups with our downtown businesses is something that's not far off. And I went to the Pullman Market, two weeks running now, and last weekend I went, and half the people there were students. So I don't think it's an issue of, you know, that we need to make any special appeal. I think it's about, one, let's just do more stuff, and, two, really listen to what they want.
Shay?
So I don't think I mentioned it, but I am also a PhD student over at WSU in the School of Politics, Philosophy, and Public Affairs. I'm also the college representative for GPSA, which is a Graduate Professional Students Association. And since I moved here, since day one, I have been working with a lot of different groups in the community, with community members, with business owners. And I have been trying to set up different ways for us to collaborate. Because what I noticed was, when I brought something to the attention of either-or group, typically the response was, oh, WSU isn't accessible to the community members. The parking is high, it's not physically accessible, and there needs to be changes made there. We need to have our spaces ADA compliant at the very, and they're doing the bare minimum. And so those are my own qualms with the university. But I really feel like locals see the university as this totally other world, and vice versa for the students. A lot of them are international, and they feel like maybe they're not valued as members. So, like I said again, we're not pushing back. We want this to happen. It's already in the works. There are people doing the work. Let's do it.
All right. Yeah, thank you for the question. If you go to Moscow and you go onto the U of I campus, you will find that there are no personal businesses. Those students have to walk into downtown, even if they have to walk 15 or 20 minutes, and they do it without complaining. We need to stop allowing private business on campus so that people have to come in and engage the core of our downtown. And I'm not saying that we get rid of the ones that are there. They're established and they're wonderful. But we cannot allow WSU to keep sucking up all the oxygen in the air. So we need to make sure that there's no more new businesses. We need to find fun and interesting ways to get people downtown. One of the things they don't want is they don't want to get a ticket if they drink too much downtown and then they drive home. So there has to be a different way to get people downtown. And I don't want to run out of my time. I've got a million ideas on that, so I'll just stop there.
Okay. Shay, you get the next question. What skill set do you have that you believe the council needs?
I think I have the unique positionality of having lived a lot of different lives. I grew up on the East Coast for the first part of my life, grew up on the West Coast for the second part of my life. I've lived overseas. I've seen a lot of different models. And I've been in a lot of different states of being, from, you know, being housing insecure, food insecure, being a student, being in the workforce. And so I've touched a lot of dimensions. And I think that in all of those dimensions, I've always found myself in leadership, which has definitely benefited me in a lot of different ways. So I come from a very diverse background of knowledge. I've really been involved in a corporate setting, but also in a volunteer setting. I've volunteered for almost three decades of my life. And I've seen the nitty-gritty of communities and what it takes to uplift the people in those communities. So I really believe that, you know, I've got the connections required to make the city a vibrant place. I also want to say, just using my time to do this, that Toni is my favorite bartender. She literally got me through my last two years of undergrad. So she's right.
Toni, you're next.
Well, thank you. Okay. So my skill set is that I was born and raised here. I spent a lifetime in Pullman and learning about Pullman. And I've spent the better part of the last 15 years already pushing Pullman to be better and do better. I go to a lot of different meetings, and I, you know, help to put my ideas out there. I go to a lot of different meetings and I, you know, help to put my ideas out there. I own a business here, so I understand how to deal with the city on that aspect, and I talk to people. I get to talk to everybody all the time, every day. I get to hear what everybody's needs and wants are. And on like a personal level in my business, I know how to respond to those things. I know how to make, make RICOS better based on what people tell me, and that's why I'm still in business. And I can do that as a city council member as well.
John.
These aren't traditional skill sets, but I boil it down to courage, creativity, integrity, and compassion. If you know me, I'm a Big Ten kind of guy. Zebras, elephants, lions, bring, bring them all in. I love hearing from everybody and not just, and it's not, but it's not just a personal joy. I think that when we bring people together and hear more ideas, the best ideas will emerge. I am compassionate. I, when I listen to people, I hear their problems, and I do what I can to help solve them. Creativity, I, in my professional work, I've created partnerships with school districts that you don't see in towns the size of Moscow, Pullman. You see them in West Lafayette, you know, Indiana, Lafayette. So we're, I embark on initiatives that I haven't seen models for, but know that they're going to work and have championed those. And I'll leave there.
Okay, this is our last question, and Toni, you get to start. In your opinion, what is the number one issue facing Pullman?
We are dying economically. We have to figure out a way to rebuild our core, to bring back businesses, to make it a 12-month town, and to get people not only to live here, but to live here and really spend that money here. It's good for our tax base. It's good for, it's good for all of Pullman. We don't need to live in Moscow. We need to live here.
John.
Short-term, and what I hear from people, this is going to be two. Improving the business climate, I think things like the downtown project, the bypass are good and needed. But ultimately, we need to make it more viable to own and operate a business here in Pullman. That's what's going to bring vitality back to the downtown area. Last question, oh, number one issue. Longer term, answering an existential question about our growth. Do we want to grow as a community? If so, we need to be thinking about things like our aquifer. We need to think about encroaching and pushing into farmland, to natural spaces. Are we ready for that conversation? That's what I want to start pushing, is I think we need to get people together. I'm inspired by organizational and communication method. I think about like the Catholic Church, the synods, let's get the hills together. Let's break into smaller groups so that we have broader representation at each of the four hills. And then let the city councillors take that information and bring it back to the council so we really feel like we're all able to share input and make a decision as a community. Thank you.
Shay.
I feel like I said this earlier, I would say that our number one issue is prioritizing growth over stability. It is vital that we have stability for a rural community. I lived for 10 years in the boot heel of Southeast Missouri. I've seen what happens to communities that do not have their own internal community support. It's bad. We need to work on embracing food sovereignty and justice, accessibility for locals, where if big investors pull out, we don't collapse entirely. We should lean into our community gardens, make sure that these are welcoming spaces that can support our local businesses, our local restaurants. I really love, I, you know, I'm sorry, like Moscow, but I really love the model that Mayelena has, where they, they source things that are local and support their small farmers and their local providers. We should do that on all fronts, not just our longtime businesses who have been here for generations, but our small farmers who, and our indigenous peoples who know the lands and make us strong. There's a reason why Pullman is so beautiful to live in, why people choose to live here. So let's embrace that and focus on stability and not necessarily economic growth.
Thank you. That's all the questions we came prepared for. So we'll have our closing remarks now. Each candidate has two minutes. And we'll start with Toni. We'll go backwards this time.
All right, perfect. Thank you. Thank you, everybody that's up here. This is hard, and everyone did a really good job. And thank you to everyone who came, and thank you to the Women League of Voters, Women Voters. I am not someone who just talks about downtown Pullman or Pullman. I am someone who is Pullman. My business sits at the center of everything, and it's more than a place to grab a drink or a bite to eat. It is a gathering space where people can come to celebrate and connect. Every day, people walk through my doors to talk about what's going right and what's going wrong in the city because they trust me. They trust me not because I ask for it, but because I put the hard work in to earn it. This campaign isn't a career step for me. It's a continuation of that work that I do every day, serving the people of this city, helping them feel heard, and fighting for a vibrant, livable town. I think that we need, but we don't need decisions made by people who are disconnected from the street-level reality of Pullman. We need someone who has skin in the game, whose likelihood depends on the success of this town. I am not running to learn on the job. I'm running because, in a lot of ways, I'm already doing the job. And I will take this commitment and passion for Pullman with me.
I'm running for city council because I believe we need bolder leadership, as a lot of the questions that had come up before addressed. We're losing good people. We're losing businesses. And I, we, looking back, you know, I look back at prior forums, and we make a lot of the same, we ask a lot of the same questions, make a lot of the same promises. And we've been doing that for 20 years. So I think it's time that we take more decisive action, but that we don't just do that blindly. I think we really need to understand the problems that we're facing in Pullman, meaning that we need to go back and look at data, work with our various groups that many of were mentioned tonight, whether it's the Center for Civic Engagement at WSU, whether it's the Chamber of Commerce. We need to understand where we're at and where we fit into this bigger ecosystem. We compare ourselves to other cities. How valid are those comparisons? That's what we need to find out first. Additionally, Pullman's got a lot of good things going on. You know, there are committees right now, Megan Guido, leading the Housing Committee, who's going to pass that word to Eric Fagerin. There's the Bypass Committee. There's folks working on good stuff now. I think we need to get ourselves together as a community, pick that goal and work toward it together, using the city council, community organizations, individuals, working toward that same goal. And that's what I'm going to champion. And I think to that last point, I mean, building on the work of those who have come before. There's been a lot of good work that's been done, a lot of good work that's going on now. But we need to move in that direction. And a big part of that, too, is transparency and communicating to the people, when people know what's at stake and when they know how to get involved, regardless of if they've got an hour a week to give or if they're got, or if they're able to step up and give all of themselves to city council. That's what we need. We need to find places to fit people in, to work together toward our bigger goals as a community. So lastly, I'll say, yeah, big thank you, Deb, and the League of Women Voters. I think it's vital that we have nonpartisan opportunities to discuss these ideas so we can get to solve problems instead of just bickering. So thank you very much. Believe in Pullman.
Shay.
Yes, thank you so much to the League of Women Voters. I come to your events all the time, so it's weird to be up here. But I, I've also met a lot of you in the audience during my time here, not just in a capacity as a candidate, but because I, I put myself out in the community and I serve with you on different boards or I volunteer with your organizations that you work so hard to uplift. I really believe that I'm a candidate who embraces all of our groups within our community. Nobody is a stranger to me, and that's my favorite part about being on city council, is that it is totally nonpartisan. I value everybody here because you are what makes Pullman amazing. Now, I'm running because I've already been serving. I've already been doing the hard work. And I was asked by those that I work with and work for to put myself in a position that advocates for all of the Pullman citizens. We can't go stagnant as a community. It takes work, it takes effort. It takes growth in, in our social vitality. It takes being the change that you want to see in the world, and there is so much happening. Speaking of Megan Guido, she would love to have volunteers down at her new recovery center. But the Palouse is unique. I've been all over the place here, and, and from the scenery to the people and to the things that you, the people are doing in their communities, it's amazing. And right now, 25% of our population owns 100% of the town, and it shows. Now, I've engaged in projects that talk about those bigger issues, and they're not just dreams. They're stable and they work. And so I've engaged in projects that are still existing today. I put a lot of blood, sweat, and tears into those projects, and I make sure that in anything I do, that's how much I give. Because I'm not anything without my community. My kids don't have anything unless they have a community to turn to. So please vote for me, but also everyone else is really great too.
Okay, thank you. I would like to thank all the candidates who attended and all of you for participating and all the great questions we got sent. If there is a topic we did not discuss, I encourage you to contact the, each, to contact the candidates and talk to them. This forum has been recorded and will be available for viewing on YouTube and may be accessed through our website, l w v pullman.org. And I believe tomorrow, or Friday?
Tomorrow about noon.
Okay, so you heard it. Tomorrow about noon, the recording will be available. Primary ballots were scheduled to be mailed on Friday, but surprise, I got mine in the mail today. So I hope most of you did also. You can only vote for people on, for Ward 1 if you live in Ward 1. That's the rule.
Do we clap now?
Ward 3, okay, excuse me. The last day to vote is August 5th. You can still register to vote if you haven't done so or don't, or know people who haven't done so, online or by mail up to July 28th. After that, you have to go to the county office and register, but you can register all the way up to the 5th. So please, go out and vote and enjoy your evening.